All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular board meeting for the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. Tonight is October 12th, 2022. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Mark Borowski.
Here.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Here.
Markell Moore.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zanobia.
Here.
Karen Robertson.
Here.
And Kelly Piasik.
Here. Sue, can you please verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. Tonight, for Bright Lights, I'm excited to welcome Lynette Kelmage, the Executive Director from the Waukesha Education Foundation, and her team, who are going to share some exciting updates with us tonight. Welcome.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting us to speak to you this evening. I know I know most of you, but my name is Lynette Kelmage. I'm the Executive Director of the Waukesha Education Foundation, and I have a number of our Board Directors joining us this evening. Kim Dove, back here, she's our Vice President and the Chair of our 2023 Evening for Education. Janika Sabotnick, right behind me, who serves on our marketing and business outreach team, coordinates all of our raffle and auctions events, and also chairs the grant and allocation team. Dr. Jean Schumaker is our Board President, and he has a very long history with our organization. And of course, you all know Mark Borowski, who's also here this evening, and taking his job tonight and doing the WEF report. I know, he's happy. And Dr. Jim Sewerd, who also serves on our Board of Directors, in addition to their other leadership roles within our district. And I would also be remiss not to mention the previous leadership of two other current Board members, Cory Montiel, who served as our liaison before Mark joined us, and Joe Como, who's been involved in WEF for a very, very long time since beginning. So, thank you for all you do to help us support our organization. As most of you know, the Education Foundation, also known as WEF, is an independent 501(c)(3) that helps district educators, provides scholarships through our annual scholarship program, and educators through our annual grant program. We are not part of the district. Sometimes people think we are a subset of the School District of Waukesha. We are not. We are our own 501(c)(3). We have our own tax ID. We are completely separate. However, the school district is our, are the only benefactors of our work. So, we do have a wonderful supportive partnership with the district, which we appreciate, and we know that the teachers and students within the district also appreciate that. But what some of you might not know is that WEF has been providing this support since 2002, which means it's our 20th anniversary year. And I'm quite certain that the handful of people that started this organization many years ago would be amazed by our progress.
In order to succeed, we must first believe that we can. In 2002, a small group of inspired individuals started the Waukesha Education Foundation. At that time, they awarded four grants totaling a few thousand dollars. In 2022, we awarded $40,000 in grants and many scholarships throughout the school district of Waukesha. This year, we celebrate 20 years of success in educational enrichment. Strong schools, strong businesses, strong communities.
That, of course, worked fine at home. WEF has remained a steadfast, positive influencer on educators and students in our district. We've been telling you about the extensive growth of our annual scholarship program. We've told you about how our scholarship offerings have skyrocketed in the last couple of years, and I know every month Mark dutifully reports about the success of our sold-out events and helps you understand how you can get involved. So, rather than rehash all of those things, I wanted to just highlight a few. WEF is pleased to have 21 annual sponsors currently that provide our organization with $37,000 a year. But more importantly, we have retained 100% of our annual sponsors, and we've also had four sponsors this year who have decided to more than double their annual investment by moving into higher sponsorship levels. In addition, we've had great success with event-specific sponsorships as well. I know Mark has been sharing with you every month that our goal for 20 years is 20 new sponsors. That could be event sponsors or annual sponsors. So far, we've secured six. And as we celebrate our sponsor retention rate, we know that every new sponsor is a sponsor that typically supports us for many years to come. Our business community has great confidence in who we are and what we do, and we really would appreciate any networks and any support in helping us find 14 more business sponsors before our event in February. We once again saw a significant increase in our scholarship program. Our scholarship awards increased 38% over last year, and the number of scholarships that we awarded increased by 25%. We are pleased to award 53 scholarships for the class of '22 totaling $40,450. Why this increase? We made it a priority this year to create flexible options that would allow individuals and organizations to create both long-term or one-time pass-through scholarships that could be reviewed and renewed annually. This gives donors more choices and students more opportunities. All of this, of course, is a great testament to the generosity of the Waukesha community in general, and we know the students are forever grateful. We had a new donor, or we had a donor come to us, one of our major donors come to us this year, to let us know that they could no longer support us in the way they traditionally had been. As you probably know, corporate philanthropy policies often dictate how corporate, corporations are allowed to spend community dollars. Because we had already cultivated a great relationship over several years, this company challenged us to come up with something new, and our new Classroom Connect program was born. Working together, our business outreach team and I, we created a program to provide an opportunity for businesses that wanted to donate $6,000 or more, so $1,000 more than our highest annual sponsorship, to funnel direct dollars into our annual grant program for specific targeted grants that we already fund. So, this year, for the first time ever, an extra $7,500 is going to be added to our available grant dollars to provide direct and supplemental funding specifically for STEM and technology-focused grants. I know that the STEM Saratoga team is here today, and I'm sure they were really just happy to hear that. We are proud that we are large enough to make an impact, but also small enough to get creative, and dare I use the most hated word of 2020, pivot. Of course, our primary mission is to award grants to educators within our school district and to fund innovative classroom grants that make a difference. In 2000, 2022, for the first time ever, WEF awarded over $40,000 to grants and educators, a 14% increase over previous years. These grants, as we speak, are coming alive in classrooms and buildings all across our district. In the meantime, our 2020 and 2021 winners are going to be completing their grant reports to share their success, so we can then share that with our donors. So, with that, I would like to introduce you to Janika Sabotnick. She is our Grant and Allocations Chair to share some more details about the 2022 grant winners and to present the district with a symbolic check for the full amount of the classroom grants that we awarded. Janika?
Thanks, Lynette. This year, we received a total of 42 grant applications, and we are happy to share that we were able to fund 26 of those. Grant recipients will implement their projects to impact students at 14 different schools, with additional grants benefiting the Horowitz-Dremer Planetarium and the district's environmental education program, which will impact students from multiple schools. While reading through this year's requests, members of the Grant Committee and I were impressed with the creative and unique ideas that teachers came up with. From establishing a podcast club to creating an outdoor reading walk, it is clear that enhancing the educational experience of students continues to be a priority among district staff. As Lynette mentioned, this year, we were proud to increase our grants to $40,000, which enabled us to say yes to more requests. On behalf of the Waukesha Education Foundation, I would like to present a check for $40,000 to Dr. Piasik for the grants that were awarded this year.
As always, your service to our Board is incredibly appreciated. She is a gem. Now, I would like to introduce you to Kimberly Dove, our Board Vice President and Chair of our 2023 Evening for Education event, to share more with you about our 2022 WEF Award winners and invite you to get involved.
Thank you. The Evening for Education, our largest fundraising event of the year, will be held on February 16th, 2023, at the Milwaukee Marriott West in Waukesha. This year marks the 20th anniversary for the foundation. Information about the event was provided to each Board Member at their desk this evening. The back of the Save the Date is a QR code that you can scan to learn more. Right now, full and half-table sponsorships are available, as well as event sponsorships. Table seats 10, half-table seats 5. We also have event sponsorships left, so if you, your employer, or someone you know would be interested in securing a spot, please feel free to contact us. We would greatly appreciate your support. At this event, we will be celebrating all things Waukesha, recognizing our grant recipients, and we honor our 2022 WEF Award winners. We were happy to announce our 2022 WEF Award winners with in-person surprise visits last week. Corporate partner, Generac Power Systems; community partner, Waukesha YMCA; and the Sally Jo Michelko Lifetime Excellence in Education, Bill Bondart. This event sold out in 2019 and 2021. We would love for you to come, so please purchase your tickets as soon as possible. If you prefer not to buy online, just give our office a call at extension 1143, or send us an email. Full information is also available on the website.
We also value you and all your contributions. Kim has been a Board Member for a very, very long time, so we appreciate all she does. So, we thank you again for helping us to help you understand the positive impact that our organization has. In 2022, as you can see, 40,000 in grants, $40,450 in scholarships, and all that makes a tremendous impact on our students and on our educators every day. I'm thrilled that part of my job is to celebrate the wonderful things that happen in the district. And over time, we have provided over $685,000 in both grants and scholarships to the School District of Waukesha and the students that, that are educated here. So, we thank you for your time this evening. We're happy to answer any questions. We hope that we see you at some of our upcoming events. Our famous, now famous, because people actually call and ask us when it starts, our Elegant Farmer Pie Sale, our Partner in Education pie, get it? Starts on the 26th and goes until November 6th with pickup the week before Thanksgiving, so it's a great way to support our organization and also not have to go to the grocery store. Our Evening for Education on February 16th, our Partners in Education Reception, which is a really fun after-work, just social, business, networking opportunity, is on June 14th at Carroll. And then our Golf Outing has already been set up for 8:30, so you have all winter to practice. So, but thank you so much. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Thank you, Lynette. Any questions? Mr. Como?
More comments and questions? First of all, thank you for what you do, all of you, tonight, and those on the Board. I want to say, I don't know, Jean, when did you roll onto the Board? Eight years ago?
I think it was 2014.
Okay, so eight years, roughly?
I was gone after 2020, my term was up, and I came back as President when.
Yeah. Yeah, got you. Got you. I know you and a group of others on the Board at that time had the vision of bringing on a person full-time as an Executive Director, and that happens to be Lynette, who was selected. And if you notice, if you kind of keep track of things, I think that was probably one of the most important decisions that WEF ever made, to get us to the next level. And I know you're a humble person, Lynette, Jean, and those on the Board, I know you're all humble, but I think that there's been some really good decisions over the past number of years that have really taken this, this group to, to the next level. And I think we need to just really show our appreciation for that.
Thank you very much.
And I think we're expanding a little bit, you guys are expanding a little bit more to get some assist, an assistant in to help you out, right, Lynette?
We're hiring someone to help out in the office, which will be great.
Yeah, so a little bit of free advertisement. I don't know if you've hired that person yet, but if you're interested, reach out to Lynette. But great job with, it, it can be difficult to take an organization to another level, and you guys have done that, and congratulations on that.
Thank you so much.
Anything else?
I actually just wanted to ask a question, just to clarify. I know you're looking for 20 new sponsors. You said business sponsors. Can't it be individual or business?
Absolutely. We're a foundation. We will take money from anyone. As long as it's, you know, good money.
So, just to clarify, anybody in this room could become a sponsor?
That's correct.
Okay.
Absolutely. And for our Evening for Education, we even have program sponsorships, so you can do a shout-out to someone, and there's, you know, as little as 100 bucks. So, any way we can get people involved is a great way to do it. Thanks, Mark. I didn't even ask him to ask that question.
Lynn, I would just reiterate that, I mean, all of your events are very well-run, high-quality, fun activities, and so for folks who have not participated before, I highly encourage you to participate, and it's always a good time. And I know how hard you work leading up to those events, and you have a very small team. So, thank you for everything that you do to make a difference in the district.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us this evening. Thank you. Have a great night.
All right. We do have an employee recognition tonight, so Mrs. Didi will introduce the next recipient of the Employee Recognition Award.
So, this evening, the Employee Recognition Award for October will be presented this evening to John Burton. So, John, please stand up. So, John started in the School District of Waukesha in 1984, and is currently a math teacher at Saratoga STEM. Mr. Burton's nominators begin by saying that he has exemplified working to develop ideas and programs that engage students beyond the classroom. Over the past two years, he has developed an orientation program for Saratoga's 6th-grade students that begins to build the bridge between the school and the students, and also the school and the community. STEM has seen over 90% participation in the week-long orientation, where students have felt comfortable with the upcoming school year after leaving the experience. John has also engaged parents in 30-minute listening conferences throughout the month of August, where he listens to parent insight on students' characteristics, needs, and answers parent questions. He bridges, the bridges that have been built during these times have helped create seamless transition to middle school. Mr. Burton continues to demonstrate his ability to go beyond with clubs and experiences he has offered to students. John has developed a school and district-wide Future Cities competition for teams to dream about what the future might hold 100 years from now. His work with the STEM Forward Organization and his cross-campus collaboration to engage multiple schools in these events has created a more cohesive and deeper program for all students, so much so that a few years ago, a team from Butler Middle School advanced to the national competition. Without John's efforts to create this opportunity for all students, this would have never happened. John not only serves the students, but the staff is a mentor and trusted colleague whom many turn to with questions or advice about situations. John has served as a tribes trainer not only for STEM, but also for several schools throughout the district. His knowledge in classroom management has helped to reduce behavioral referrals while building a community of students who engage in collaboration and who have shown to grow at a faster rate as a result. These are only a few of the many ways that John has served Saratoga, the students, the community, and the staff. So, on behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I would like to congratulate John Burton on being selected to receive the School District of Waukesha Employee Recognition Award.
Okay, so you can head on off to Dr. Piasik.
I think I've got half your kids, so. Sure. Of course, I'm used to being kind of, oh, I have to be on the mic. I don't have this at school, so this is kind of cool. Huge thanks to, obviously, our Principal Jim Murray, who is a great leader. He allows us to do what we do best, and I think it's proven. My team at school, my math team, the group that we're with, Ann is here, and we've been here since the beginning, but thanks for all the support, and it's been a good ride. So, appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you. So, as we are back in full swing with the school year, we will have our first school year update from our student representatives. And tonight, we have representing West High School, Lilly Flaherty and Brady Foster. Welcome.
Oh, that's not right. Does anybody know how we can see the speaker notes and present at the same time? Usually it works. That's what I did.
I don't know.
That's. Jessica, if I can put.
I think if we add them presentation order, it will give you.
Yeah, when I start from the beginning.
Second device. Second device is coming.
Oh, yeah, that'll work. Hi, I'm Lilly Flaherty.
And I'm Brady Foster.
And we're both seniors at West, and it's our pleasure to be presenting today about West's accomplishments and events so far this school year.
So, first, we'll be talking about academics.
This year, we implemented a new Monday-through-Friday schedule, so we kept our regular drop-to classes a day, but instead of having advisory for 20 minutes on Mondays only, we have Jit or Just-in-Time for 30 minutes every day. So, on Mondays, we have a lesson about staying organized or planning for the future, just like we did in our advisory classes. But now, teachers can assign you to their class on Wednesdays through Fridays to make up missing work or get help. Tuesday is a time to see if you've been assigned to any homerooms by teachers by looking in your infinite campus. If you're not assigned somewhere, you just go to your homeroom teacher, and you can use it as a study hall. This way, we still have the Just-in-Time or Jit from last year, but now it's mandatory for everyone.
Something else that's different, in the last couple of years, we've had one single lunch period for all students, but then this year, we changed it to two separate lunches. So, the first lunch is between seniors and freshmen, and seniors have the option to leave campus. And then the second lunch is between the sophomores and the juniors, so.
Our West Athletics have been going really well so far this year as well.
So, our girls' cross-country has been having a great season with lots of girls placing, and they're getting ready for conference coming up this Saturday. Boys' cross-country took first place at the Shorewood Invite last weekend, and has conference this weekend as well. And then the boys' and girls' volleyball also have been, have been doing well, and the girls beat Arrowhead last week, who, Arrowhead is ranked eighth in state, and then the boys beat CMH, who is ranked 10th in state.
This coming Friday, our football team, which Brady is the captain of, has their last regular season of game of the year against Maguano, after a victory over North last week, as well as the boys' senior night. If we win this game, we guarantee a spot in the playoffs.
Our girls' tennis team has been having a great year and is constantly improving. The girls' swim took first place at the Watertown Ike and Earlybird Invite this season. Our girls' golf placed fourth in the Classic A Conference, and after the regional meet, they advanced to the WIAA Sectionals. And then the dance and cheer teams have been putting on some great performances for a variety of events, from football to soccer and even our pep rally.
Lastly, the boys' varsity soccer team has an incredible nine wins and two ties, and they were even number one in state for a while and are currently seeded number one in conference. As our fall sports wrap up, we would like to acknowledge how great it has been for students to show up for all of our sports, not just the ones that tend to get recognition. We are also gearing up for fall sports. Students are excited, and open gyms and meetings have already begun.
At West, there are many amounts, or many clubs and activities. We have a whopping 46. Students also have the ability to propose new clubs as well, so anyone looking for something that's not already at West, they can start their own clubs.
West's marching band has had a great season with their show Sliver and Stone, so far taking home two first places last weekend at the Milton and Maguano Invite. And they are set to compete at State in Whitewater this weekend. Our choir department is also preparing for their first concert of the year on November 30th, and we're lucky enough to work with a professor from Carroll to help them get ready.
Drama is in full swing, performing, getting ready to perform their fall play Epic Proportions, which opens up on Friday, October 21st. This year, we also had the biggest class for National Honor Society with 83 scholars. And then our interact club is getting up and running this year, and they've had their quarterly highway cleanup of Lawnsdale near West last weekend.
This year, our theme for Homecoming was Hollywood.
Leading up to the Homecoming Dance, we had Spirit Week, so some of the days, we had Pajama Day, Class Colors, and West Beard Days. And then two new themes this year, we had Adam Sandler Day, so you dress in some baggy clothes and all that. And then the other day was Soccer Mom versus Barbecue Dad. So, those were, we had a great turnout. Lots of people were involved and had a lot of fun with the two new spirit days, as well as the three old ones.
This Friday before, the Friday before Homecoming, we had our annual pep rally, where we hosted a lot of fun games, as well as our highly anticipated dance between the football players and the dance team.
Our Powderpuff Games went well. We had an upset in the first game, where the freshmen took down the juniors, and then in the championship, they put up a fight but ended up losing to the seniors.
We also had a great turnout for the Homecoming Football Game against South, where the Wolverines won 50 to 7, even scoring a touchdown in the first play. We also showcased our Homecoming Court. West's master singers performed the National Anthem, and the dance and cheer teams performed, as well as the marching band, who also performed at our pep rally.
We also welcomed two new inductees to our Wall of Fame, Danielle Abraham, who was in the class of 2005, and Luis Crisostomo, which was in the class of 1998. The actual Homecoming Dance on Saturday was a blast. Theme was Hollywood, which we said, and we sold just under 850 tickets, so it was a great turnout and really fun.
That about wraps it up, so thank you all. We'd be happy to answer any of your questions, but it's been a great honor to be able to present here, so thank you.
Very nice. Thank you both. Karen?
Thank you. I was just wondering, how do you feel about the lunch? How's it going that it's in two different times?
It's definitely different, because it's, it was 15 minutes last year, and it's 30 this year. So, it's definitely much shorter, so it makes it harder to go off-campus, like kids that go home or go out to eat. It's definitely, yeah, in a rush to get through it.
It's also, though, nice, because at first, I liked the hour, the one lunch period better, because you could go with friends and go out to someone's house and just eat lunch there, but I'm still able to do that now with the lunches that we have, and it's not as much of a rush to get out. There's not all four grades going to lunch at one time. It's two at a time, so it's, it's a lot more organized and less chaotic, so.
So, I don't know if we said this, but when, one, two grades have lunch, the other two grades have homeroom, so then it swaps times. And we have 5:00 hour in between them, or 6:00 hour on Fridays, so they're not right back to back. It also makes getting through, like, the lunch lines quicker, because there's less kids versus 800 kids trying to get through one line.
Those are good pros and cons. And then the last is, who thinks of your school's spirit days? Do you vote on them as a class? Does the whole school vote on them?
I'm the president of Student Council, so I kind of organize it, and then I fill, I make a form with a bunch of ideas I found or other people have given me, and then all of Student Council votes on it, and we take the majority vote. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Kozlowski?
Thank you. That was a great presentation. Might be a little partial to West, but, so seniors, I remember when you were freshmen. So, looking back, and if you had to give advice to yourself coming in, what would you, what would you give yourself advice on?
I don't, I think, don't put pressure on trying to find, like, a major or a college. I didn't figure it out till last year, like, end of last year, so there's really no rush, and you can always go undecided, and it seems like you don't have a lot of time, but you really do. There's a lot of time and a lot of great resources that were offered to be able to find it.
I would say just live in the moment. There's some days when people are going to go and hang out, and some of your friends, but, you know, you're feeling a little tired, and it's getting a little later, but you look back at it now. but you look back at it now and you wish you would've gone, you know, and hung out and, or gone to the game or whatever, instead of just going in your room and going to bed early. So, I mean, as much as it's good to get good sleep and stuff, you want to live in the moment, and you only live in high school once, so.
Mr. Moore?
So thank you for that wonderful presentation. And I wanted to just say, you know, I wish you both the best. And like you said, live in the moment. I'm not that far out of high school. We're young, but, you know, I look back at the memories. And so I want you all to know that, you know, take time this year to really capture those moments and make sure that, you know, you are living in it, because it's gonna go by when the year's over. And I want you all to keep those memories with you, okay? So good luck in your futures.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? We've been back to school for barely six weeks. I'm just impressed at all the activities and all the things that are going on. It sounds like you all have had a great start to athletics and the school year in general, so very impressive. Maybe, Lilly, you could come up with some themes for our board meetings.
See.
Might not go over very well, but be curious what you think. But no, thank you so much, and we'll hear from you all again in a few months, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for our citizens to speak. We have six speakers tonight, which means they will be allowed up to five minutes to complete their comments, but we will notify you at three minutes. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and to be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations might be prohibited from speaking at future board meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments by members of the community here tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used, and the area behind the speaker and podium will be clear during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cellphone at this time. Our first speaker tonight will be Renee Messerschmidt, followed by Amanda Anderson.
This is on. My name is Renee Messerschmidt. I'm the mother of three, one who attends New Hadfield. At the Randall Sale Listening Session on September 21st, several Hadfield families were in attendance. I was one of them. I had to respond to Dr. Seibert when he stated STEM would be fully stocked like Hadfield after the merger. Hadfield has staff, but not enough to deal with the overwhelming behavioral issues that the school is currently dealing with. Behavioral issues that many Whittier and Hadfield families stressed as a concern during our listening sessions and during open comments at the school board meetings. This was my number-one concern as a mother who is already dealing with the youngest son being physically assaulted repeatedly by another student with behavioral issues. Before the merger, the reported percentage of behavioral issues in the district was a whopping 40% plus between Whittier and Hadfield. Many families stressed their worries about disruptive learning and safety concerns with class sizes doubling. With more kids, teachers could not monitor behavioral issues as well during class time. But the administration played down our concerns of the families, stating that we would have all the staff we needed to handle the load. And the school board voted in favor of this merger based on the promises of the administration. I asked Dr. Seibert how he could say Hadfield has enough staff when he hasn't been to Hadfield to monitor the situation. I asked you, the board members, why none of you have checked in with Hadfield's staff and students to see how things have been going? Is it not your job to make sure newly-merged school is being as successful as you claimed it would be? Two days after Randall Listening Session, Dr. Seibert, Mr. Clark, and President Dr. Piasik came to tour Hadfield. But it was before school hours, when students weren't present, and their visit was centered on the upgrades put into the school and not how the school was performing. Just completely ignored the Hadfield family's concerns again. My cross-country coach has this saying that he would tell his athletes. Actions speak louder than words. But I would like to add that lack of action speaks volumes, and the administration and school board are demonstrating a high level of inaction regarding the current behavioral issues at Hadfield. Not even a month into the school year, and the second-grade families at Hadfield had a letter sent home from the school. It was a list of concerns that are currently happening in the second-grade classrooms right now. Inability and/or refusal to follow classroom expectations, non-academic basics like lining up, transitioning to carpet, and following indoor voices, keeping them, keeping their hands to themselves, using school supplies appropriately, using kind words with classmates, staying in the room during class, and lack of respect towards staff with words and actions, and handling emotions with frustration. Hadfield staff are doing everything that they can to control these issues, but they're stretched too thin. Our staff is working an average of 10 hours a day. Our principals are often riding the buses home after school to control behavioral issues once the students leave the building. The bottom line is there is not enough eyes from educators to monitor the situation. Our school needs help. We need an aide per grade, floating teachers between classrooms, and more support for a school psychologist. The board voted on this merger. The administration said this school would be successful. Perhaps it's time to put your money where your mouth is. If you want the newly-merged school to be successful and the students to flourish, then provide more staff to Hadfield.
Amanda Anderson, followed by Paul Reese.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Anderson. I currently have four children in the district, two of which currently attend Hadfield. In addition to having children in this district, I currently am a long-term sub, but also a sub almost daily. I'm the acting president of the Hadfield PTO and was previously the president of the Whittier PTO for the last five years. I'm here tonight because, as a parent, teacher, and volunteer, I'm witnessing a number of injustices and inequity in our district. Last year, the board voted to close Whittier and merge it with Hadfield. As you are all aware, these two schools have the highest number of fragile students in all of the district. This newly-merged building now has unequivocally the highest number of free and reduced students, highest number of special education students, highest number of transient students, and the elementary school with the most students of trauma. So in short, we are absolutely the highest-needs elementary school in the district. One would think that when this is the case, that a district that genuinely cares about their students, families, and staff would throw every resource into making this building successful. That is not happening. We just got done reading a book in second grade entitled Those Shoes. For those of you that are not familiar with it, it is a book about a boy who wanted a certain pair of shoes that everyone else had. But instead of getting what he wanted, he got a pair of boots that he needed. The grandma in the book tells the boy there's no room for want around here, just need. I urge you to truly consider what this quote means. The district said that the reason this merger was needed was because of the budget. So we tried to accept it with the most grace possible, despite the countless objections we had. We were lied to by the board and the administration about the reasons for this closure. We have sessions on video where administration denied the sale of these buildings and basically told us that we were nuts. In fact, I was yelled at in the third listening session by a member of this board and told by others in phone conversations and emails that they had no knowledge of this. This is shameful enough, but now you're giving our building to STEM. As that is not insulting enough, you're considering a new drop-off arrangement that allows for safer drop-off and pickup for the STEM children. Why was this not done for the Whittier students and families? Is safety of STEM students more important than the safety of Whittier students? Why is it suddenly now a need? How is this equitable? You might argue that they have more students, but there was a time when Whittier had as many as that, and we dealt with the parking and drop-off and pickup. It was also suggested at the special meeting regarding the sale that the money that STEM raised for a new playground would not be applied towards a newer upgraded playground at Whittier. It could be used for other upgrades. I just don't understand. An upgraded playground is not a need. The current playground at Whittier is in good shape. All of our students used it. So if STEM wants a new playground, why can't they use the money that they fundraised to pay for it? Our merged PTO has a current bank account, and I need you to really hear this number, like, truly hear this number and compare it to the other schools in this district. We have $13,000 that we have blood-sweated and tears over. We have worked really hard for it, as I'm sure other schools have. We busted our tails, but this money is used to purchase things that we need.
Two minutes.
Not things that we want. Things like Velcro for our special ed students to have cue cards and visual aids. The money is used to purchase wireless keyboards and mice that are needed for smart TVs in the classroom. Our staff needs iPad, or needed iPad chargers and hubs to charge the student iPads that the district provides to each student, but that most of our families can't afford to replace. And if we're being honest, and this is in addition to my speech, they, they don't usually bring their chargers back. At the beginning of the school year, we get about 25% of them brought back, which is the need for the chargers. These are needs. A new playground purchased by the district, one one is already there and suitable, is not a need. It's a want. It was also said that air would be put into Blair, where the administration will soon be housed. This is mind-boggling to me, when for years I have watched staff and students come out of a sweltering building, red-faced and sweat-drenched. How is it that administration gets an air-conditioned building when our students and staff don't even have air? Especially when the staff and students at Whittier and other non-air-conditioned schools went all through COVID wearing a face mask and a face shield in sweltering buildings. The inequality in this district is staggering. There seems to be money in the district for wants, yet very little for our needs. I ask you today to think long and hard about making equitable decisions. If you decide to proceed with the things that you have talked about, like air and new drop-offs, then I will be eagerly waiting to hear and see how you will help our most vulnerable students.
30 seconds.
Thank you, Amanda. Next is Paul Reese, followed by Kelsey Draves.
Good evening. First, I want to, you know, praise West today. It was, what we got today, our communication was excellent with the principal from West. We were contacted, we've, three times it was from him, and it was great. And Bethesda was really good as well. Although, all we needed was once, because we have half-day, and they were telling us to stay if we weren't there. It was really wild, because this thing hit right at, between the two half-days, when you were coming and going. So the communication was excellent there. So I want to just give an ode to them that that was, that was really, really good. I just want to read something that came from South. Due to the overwhelming injuries and out of concern for student athletes and safety, student athlete safety, Waukesha South has canceled its varsity football game for Friday, October 7th, 2022, against Arrowhead, as well as the remainder of the varsity season, football season. The Waukesha South staff is working to find alternatives following South Fest to showcase our band, dance team, cheer team, and football student athletes. Actually, I thought that's what a football game was for. I, I, I don't, this is a black eye in this district. This, you, you made a commitment, not just to the kids, but you made a commitment to the WIAA and all the other schools that you're backing out on. Those kids have looked forward to these things, and it's, it's not just a game to them. It, it's an event. You know, the dance teams at other schools, they work hard for this. The bands work hard for this. This is, some of them, their last chance. This is their senior year, and they backed out of it. And they didn't fulfill their obligation. And that is, that, that should've come with, that letter should've come with a resignation, in my opinion. I don't see how that was allowed to stand. That was a poor decision, and the kids will pay the price for it. The, the, there's other things, like, there's, the, the bus drivers are out, honey. There's a lot of other costs here. The, 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 the clubs that raise money and that, that sell the sweatshirts and that, they're all, you know, this opportunity, there's, it's just a mess. And it does look bad for this district when, when South pulls this. And I feel sorry for the kids, not only here, but in all the neighboring districts that are out this time. But on the positive side, I want to say something positive about South, and it's swim team. They have a girl there that is just phenomenal. Her name's, I'll just say her first name, Ella. And she just, she is great, she's a freshman, and she might be the best swimmer in the school.
Two minutes.
It is really fun to go watch her swim. And she is something else. It is really wild seeing a freshman take the box and take lane four and, and against all seniors and just blow them out of the water. She is something else, and it's a great thing. The swim teams here are great, all the girls are. My daughter's on, on West. And it's just the camaraderie between all the schools, because they're all, a lot of them swim club together. So when you go to the meet, it's a lot of fun. And that's what these sports are supposed to be about. It's not just about winning and how much you're gonna win by or lose by. But it's the fun that they have and the interaction. And so, anyways, thanks.
Okay, Kelsey Draves, followed by Keith Best.
Hi, everyone. So my name is Kelsey Draves, and I'm a parent of three children in the district. I'm here tonight to speak about the concerns I have with the administration's lack of transparency to the parents and the community, as well as concerns with false promises and lack of support for the Hadfield Elementary School community. I first wanted to state that it was said multiple times by administrators that one of the reasons Whittier's, Whittier was due to close was due to the dwindling numbers. I think the number that was thrown around a lot was 43% of the building was occupied by students that was being used. What administrators failed to say during their talking points and to the media was that Whittier had a grant that helped keep kids, the class sizes low for kindergarten through third grade. Whittier also wasn't available or wasn't open for school choice. So if you lived outside of that area, you weren't allowed to school choice in. So this was a, a situation that happened because of these things that we put in place for that school. But anyway. During the merger, parents and community members pled for transparency from the district and asked repeatedly if Whittier's closure had anything to do with the selling of Randall to Carroll College. SDW administrators told us no repeatedly. These are just some of the lies and half-truths that paved the way for a business deal to make the district some money. The district chose to close a school The district chose to close a school that served the highest number of special needs students, the highest number, as well as the highest number of economically disadvantaged students, to move a STEM charter school into that building and then sell the remaining building to Carroll College. You chose profit over your most valuable students in this district. The new merged Hatfield promised to be robust and well-taken care of by the district. Parents and teachers and community members were given lots of promises and were told time and time again that everything was going to hopefully work out. We were promised each grade would have three sections and that there would be cap sizes on classrooms. Well, right now, currently, there's only two sections of the fifth grade in the school. And starting out this year, each of those classes had 31 and 28 students in them respectively, which is above the cap. Hatfield was also promised one full-time and one part-time psych employee to help with the increased number of students with special needs. But before the school even started, the halftime person was taken away. And there was no replacement to, in replace of that. Teachers expressed to the district's special ed administrators that they were, that they were struggling to meet the minutes for each students and do groups with these special education students. How do you think I feel as a special ed parent?
Two minutes.
Hearing that from a teacher the other day. I don't feel great about that. Hatfield staff regularly have, have to, regularly have two to three before school meetings a week to give up, and they also give up their prep time as well. A teacher who I spoke with said that morale is very low in the building and that they are already extremely burned out. And so these are examples that don't come from me just making stuff up or saying, I heard a teacher who. No, we're, we're actively hearing this from the staff in that building. There are some incredible teachers and, and principals that are in that building who work magic every single day to make this work 100%. But if they're not supported by the folks that are in this room and are not given the things that they need to be successful, that's going to fall on our children, and we're going to lose these really good people in the district. And that's just something that we need to think about. So thanks.
Thank you, Kelsey. Keith Best, followed by Marilyn Granger.
Good evening, everyone. I've been coming to these school board meetings on and off for the last couple of years, going back to when I worked in Madison in the state capital. I was chief of staff to a legislator who happened to represent this district. And I used to come to the meetings just to report back as to what's going on. I learned a lot of things over that period of time. And then my children started having children. And so my grandchildren started coming and coming to the school district as students, and I've been watching them and what's been happening. And for a while there, I didn't like what was happening, and I didn't, I didn't feel the school board was representing the community the way it should have been. I looked at some things, and I realized that some changes needed to be made. Otherwise, I would ask if my sons needed help financially to have my grandchildren attend private school. Now, in the meantime, things have changed a little bit, and the school board has changed a little bit. And I think for the better. And I've known some things have happened. For example, at Arrowhead, I just heard today that with the pronoun situation they had at Arrowhead, that a student threatened to harm teachers and burned down the school. Now, if anybody here happens to be intimidated or feel unsafe, I want you to know that we have your back. We support you. You know, I've been threatened in my position with what I do. I've been, they've attempted to intimidate me, but that doesn't bother me at all. You know, I have no feelings at all for the threats that have been directed towards me. Because I have faith in what I do, I have faith in who I am, and I have faith in all of you. Stay strong.
Thank you. Our last speaker tonight is Marilyn Granger.
Hello. Thanks for this opportunity. I just wanted to address something that came to my attention. And actually, a friend sent it to me. It was posted in Wisconsin Right Now on Intimidated site. And it was related to the new sex education curriculum by the Wisconsin Department of Instruction. And actually, the main focus was that Wawa Tosa School Board accepted this curriculum on A2222. The teacher that was addressed in this article was Jim Kraus, and he signed it himself and said he was a nine-year Milwaukee school system experienced teacher. And he reported on the comprehensive sex ed that he felt in his mind it was very filthy, disturbing, and wrong. He's referencing what students are being indoctrinated in related to sexual acts in the sixth grade. And this focus was the sixth grade. And I did go to the DPI site, and it took me quite a while to find the curriculum for a sixth grader. They have curriculum for each class. I found the sixth grade class, and then I went through that. And yes, number six did have these sexually totally explicit words with explanations of how these things are done with the anatomy parts. These are sixth graders. So now, first, we have obscene books in the library, and now we have this indoctrination into sexual acts, all under the guise of human growth and development. This is done, whatever it is called. It doesn't make it valuable or any less criminal and is nothing less than pedophilia. The curriculum, let's see. Mr. Kraus addressed the teacher lesson plan, and he looked at the, how he works his lesson plans. And a lot of other teachers also do that same way. They first introduce the vocabulary, and they allow, and they give out handouts and pronunciation, and they practice this for 15 minutes. Then they use flash cards and something called slap.
Two minutes.
Game, which I'm not sure what that is, along with handouts. And they also have a whiteboard on which they play interactive games on it. So how it would work is that under the first phase, terminology is noted as above, where they're talking about anal sex, masturbation with a partner, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. It was so expressive, and the teacher is supposed to explain this in great detail that it was just nauseating. Then the flash cards and handouts are used to, again, go over the terminology. Then there's a whiteboard game, and they, each student picks out a card with a sexual term on it. Imagine your eleven-year-old daughter, which is what he had, picked a card that said anal sex. And now, because of equity, the classes are gender neutral. She has to explain, because that's what you do on your whiteboard, explain what this is to show that you have knowledge of what the teacher is trying to teach you. How embarrassing. Six years, sixth grade. And even on the DPI.
Thirty seconds.
And a lot of this is done to prevent STD. But even on their site, 10, 11, and 12-year-old girls don't seem to have the problem with STD. So why would they introduce this?
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you to all of our speakers tonight for taking the time to be here with us and share your perspectives. At this time, we will move on to the general business, additional general business, which is our minute approval. We have been very busy in the month of September, so we have seven sets of minutes to approve tonight. That includes the September 14th public budget hearing, September 14th regular board meeting, and then followed by the executive session, the September 22nd expulsion executive session expulsion panel, September 27th special board meeting, September 27th executive session, and October 5th executive session.
Sue moved.
Moved by Mr. Montijo.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Como. Any changes, corrections, discussion, or questions? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Corey Montijo.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Kelly Piasak.
Aye. Passes nine zero. We already had our WEF report tonight from Ms. Kalmich. So under communications, Dr. Seibert, anything tonight?
None this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So we'll move on to our consent agenda. To begin, Mr. Clark will present the gifts report.
Five gifts tonight. Meadowbrook Elementary School received $2,500 from David Culp in memory of Terry Culp. This gift is to be used for various items that support students in grade-two classrooms under the direction of Jessica Artman. Hatfield Elementary School received $2,200 from WCCF and WEF, Hatfield School Scholar, Hatfield School Scholastic Fund to provide hands-on experiences for students. Waukesha South received $500 from Somerset Marine Construction LLC and $500 from Kramer, Moltough, and Hain, Haines LLP to sponsor Waukesha South DECA. The school district received various school supplies from Target with an estimated value of $7,500, and notebooks, pencils, and folders from Myers with an estimated value of $6,000. These will be distributed to schools to provide supplies for students in need. And last, Waukesha West received $1,050 from an anonymous donor to purchase equipment for the girls volleyball team.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, and thank you to all of those generous donors for those gifts and contributions. Your agenda tonight includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. Included in the items for approval tonight are the decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on September 22nd, 2022, and the panel that met on October 5th, 2022. A confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsions was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes included under item 1H. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the closure of the regular meeting. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. There are no policies or bylaws included in the consent agenda tonight. At this time, if anyone wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate as so. Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Robertson, would you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Yes, Mrs. President, yes. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of three resignations, one retirement, one leave of absence, and eight new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Seeing no discussion, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Corey Montijo.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasak.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Moving on to our superintendent's report, Dr. Seibert.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasak. Tonight, I wanted to publicly thank you as a board for your support of our administrative recommendation to sell two of our district buildings to Carroll University. I think it's exciting that collectively we're willing to tackle topics that are challenging and ones that show our constituents that we are strong stewards of their resources. And I think by making tough and bold decisions, we pave the way to be more efficient by addressing our enrollment trends, our district footprint, and our structural deficit. Those decisions, in turn, allow us to focus our attention on why we exist, which is student achievement, teaching and learning, and high-quality opportunities for our kids, families, and community. Since your approval of the sale of Randall and Lindholm, which is just a little over two weeks ago, on September 27th, we've been working diligently to inform our stakeholders and plan for the transitions to both Whittier and Blair. Mr. Clark and I have met with our Lindholm staff, the Randall staff, the STEM Governance Board, and tomorrow evening, we'll be with the Randall PTSO, that is, the Parent Teacher Student Organization. We will keep our lines of communication open and later this month, begin tours of the facilities at Blair and Whittier for both of the employee groups. Our goal is also to have our packing and moving plan in place by the end of October for both sites. We're making progress on the new driveline solution at Whittier to address the traffic flow, and we're working to solidify the slightly modified start and end time after the move for Randall as well. I'll provide updates to you each month as we keep moving forward together. And again, I just really want to thank you for your support in continuing to move the school district of Waukesha forward in a positive and uplifting direction. Thank you, Dr. Piasak.
Thank you, Dr. Seibert. All right, moving on to our committee reports. First committee on the agenda tonight is the Policy Committee. Mr. Montijo, any updates for this evening?
No, Dr. Piasak. The Policy Committee does not meet monthly. We have a meeting that I think will probably be scheduled perhaps next month. We await Niola update, I believe.
Correct. We're meeting with Niola on Friday to get the series, and then we'll begin some administrative work leading into the Policy Committee, and I'll be reaching out to you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Cook, do you have an estimate of the size of the policy series that's up for revision?
It's approximately 25 policies. Some of them are obviously duplicate if they apply to staff and to the administration, professional support. So some of the language is not going to be cumbersome for us to address. There'll be some new policy recommendations that'll come in.
Okay, thank you. We'll look forward to that. Lots of work ahead. All right, next on our agenda tonight is the Finance and Facilities Committee, and that update will be presented by Mr. Como.
Thank you, Mrs. President. Tonight, we do not have any action items, but we do have seven discussion and information items. The first one is on our Employee Clinic Report. Representatives from Pro Health were in attendance to discuss the first nine months of operation. Pro Health has met with the board, has met the board's goals of increasing patient access and utilizing more technology while both lowering our costs and offering a high level of service efficiency. The new clinic service model generated savings of $313,626 in the fiscal year of 21, 2022, and it's projected to save the district $574,079 in the 2022, 2023 year. Any discussion on, Mr. Count?
I just have a quick question. Obviously, that sounds significant, and I'm sure it is. Do we know, like, percentage-wise of the overall budget for benefits that the $300-some-thousand savings are or the $500-some-thousand are?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can tell you those numbers, and I think I outlined them at FNF as well. The old clinic used to have an annual budget of about $1.1 million, so you're looking at a 50% savings. Our total spend for health insurance, all-in, is about $22 million. When you look at global health insurance, it's not much. But in terms of that specific operation, you're looking at a 50% drop in costs. And in lieu, I think you're offering two locations versus one, access to Epic and all these other things that the other, other, or former clinic never offered as well, so.
Okay, so I'm understanding you, for that category, it'll be about 50% savings, and then, I guess, do the math on the 20-some-million.
I can't do that on.
Yeah.
No.
Think also, Mr. Clark, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'm right. When we switched over to the Pro Health clinics, we had more of our staff utilizing the new clinics. Is that correct?
Yes. We're at least, so what makes it hard is that the old clinic, if you had got a prescription filled, because we used to do prescriptions through there, we're not doing that. We have some other solutions we're working on and have implemented for that purpose. You would have a visit to get a script. So it's kind of hard. But even with that factor, we're, we're serving at least as many, and I think more, of our employees than we did with the old clinic. And part of that's having a larger, more robust virtual appointment.
And the reason why I brought that up is, is cost savings was one of the initial reasons to switch our clinic up a bit. But we also wanted to get utilization up too. You know, so we, you know, we were finding that, you know, teachers wouldn't come during the week, and they didn't want to leave their class, and, you know, those kinds of things. And I think the, what do you call it, tele?
Tele net.
Tele net, yeah. That's, that's being used more too, I believe. So I think it's a combination of some cost savings and providing a better clinic to have our employees take advantage of.
Just one other thing, because we're actually going through our HRAs for staff, health risk assessments, the blood work and the blood pressure and all that baseline data. All that now gets loaded into Epic. So when that, the doctor actually sees the results of those tests. Before, it would end with our former provider of healthcare at the old clinic sending you a letter, hey, you qualify under three of these five things. If you're like me, the letter ended up on a pile on your desk and then eventually ended up in a circular formed box next to my desk. So there's a whole lot of things. And if you didn't watch the presentation, I thought PHC did a nice job of summarizing some of the benefits that we're garnering beyond dollars.
And maybe just a quick clarification, because we do have a lot of employees, and the coverage is employees and their covered dependents. So we have spouses and children who are also taking advantage. So it's, it's a large number of participants.
And I think having two locations as opposed to one also has helped quite a bit too, so.
Yeah. And then just, if you haven't followed, last month, we reported out, our Waukesha location was at Waukesha Memorial. Now they have a brand-new clinic on Sunset, right next to Hobby Lobby and everything else. Much easier to navigate. You truly pull right up to the door, and we think that'll even make numbers even a little higher as well.
All right, our second discussion item is the health insurance report. Jeff Schultz from HNI provided an update on our cost savings from the implementation of the specialty drug program, which has saved the district $1.8 million in its first year of operations. The change in the Employee Clinic Service Model and the move to the specialty drug program has saved the district's self-funded health plan over $2 million. The success of these new approaches and programs allowed the district to freeze health premiums for the fiscal year of 2022, 2023. That's good news. There's not a lot of places I can say that. Our third item tonight is the Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning update. The committee discussed the scope of work that has been suggested by our design. The committee discussed the scope of work that has been suggested by our design assist contractor, Total Mechanical. Extremely long lead times for some of the components are affecting which projects will be identified for Phase One and which projects will need to be in Phase Two-A. Phase One and Phase Two-A estimated costs are $10,327,000. Next month, the administration will bring forth a financing plan for both Phase One and Two-A of the committees, for the committees' consideration.
Any questions or discussion on that? Okay.
Moving on to our budget update. The committee was updated on the current estimates of the 2022-2023 budget. On October 15th, DPI will certify the district's equalization aid and voucher program participation levels, which will enable the business office to calculate the final tax levy and rate. Final approval of the 2022-2023 budget levy is scheduled at a special board meeting on, I think it's Monday, October 24th. So hopefully, you'll all come and join us. Moving on to our next information discussion item, Tax Incremental Financing of TID Number 31. The committee discussed the Waukesha Tax Incremental Financing Plan for the TID, which is Tax Incremental District Number 31. The city is looking to develop a vacant warehouse building on the north, the east-north side. Unlike the other taxing entities on the Joint Review Board, a TIF does not hinder the school district's ability to generate revenue authority allowed under the revenue limit calculation.
I would just maybe add to that, for any board members that have questions about how the TID proposals and process works at the city level, I think Darren and Mr. Como in particular have quite a bit of experience and could answer those questions. We had a brief conversation Monday night, but there are some decisions that the city's looking to us to make, so please reach out if you have questions about that process.
All right. Moving on to our monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures are within limits for both the General and Special Education Fund. The district is operating with our approved budget in all other funds as well. And our last item tonight is the ESER update. The administration shared a trial balance of items that have been approved by the board. We have added the preliminary Phase One, the HVAC expenditure budget. This report will continue to be agendized on a monthly basis to keep the Finance and Facilities Committee and the Board of Education updated on the utilization of ESER funding.
All right.
And, Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Como. That was a lot. It was a very productive meeting, a lot of topics. All right, moving on to our next committee, Teaching and Learning, will be presented by Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik. We have an action item and a couple of discussion items. Our first action item is the approval of the Secondary Math Course, which is the Quantitative Reasoning and Advanced Applications. This course is intended to re-energize student interest in mathematics by demonstrating connections to the real world with the purpose of preparing students for a variety of post-high school learning opportunities. It was a vote of four to one that the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the Secondary Math Course, Quantitative Reasoning, and Advanced Applications as presented. We request board approval and ISO move.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Como. Opportunity for questions or comment? Anyone? Mr. Borowski?
Yeah, I guess I'll start. So, okay, a few things. I guess, I mean, I watched the TNL committee meetings, but I probably still don't have as good an understanding as those on the committee. Was there ever a, I guess, a presentation of kind of the current flow chart of math classes versus what the proposed is, to kind of lay the two side by side, just as kind of a visual? I know I saw one flow chart, but that was just the current, or the proposed, I think.
And Mrs. Landish, do you want to take that? And this conversation's been going on since?
Years.
Yeah.
Yes, so, Mr. Borowski, in that recent meeting, we did not have a current flow chart. To Dr. Piasik's point, we've kind of been engaged in this process for about two and a half years. However, I can give you in Friday's board packet the current sequence.
Okay.
The Teaching and Learning Board members have an alternate course offering sequence also that we're going to bring back to them in November. So if the full board would want both of those visuals, I can provide that in the Friday update for you.
Okay. I would, I don't know about the rest, but.
Sure. I can get that for you.
Sure. Okay. And then, if it's, if my understanding is correct, the proposed classes, one of which we'll be voting on tonight, are all optional? So it's, they're after the required classes that everybody has to take? Is that correct?
This, this option would be the third of three credits at the high school level.
Okay. So I think that answers that question that I was going to ask. And then, I guess, just the overall, the impetus to the change, like, what's the driving force behind it? I mean, general improvement or whatever, but was there, you know, kind of the impetus or rationale for the change, and maybe pros and cons versus what we have now versus what you're proposing?
So I think the two, let me speak, Mr. or Dr. Piasik, okay. I think the two driving forces, Mr. Borowski, were the student achievement measures over time in the area of math in our district, and I would say the second driving force has been the new standards adoption, of which is implementing a more integrated approach rather than isolated classes that never sort of spiral and come back. I think the goal also is to, although not the primary driver, certainly, it's always a goal to expand mathematical opportunities for our kids, and so we have some exciting opportunities to be able to do that as well as we progress through the change.
And then, what do you mean by spiral and come back?
So when I grew up, and I feel like I'm one of those people, right? We had everything in algebra class, you went to algebra, and like, that's all you did. There was no geometry infused in. And so when I use the word spiral, I say the standards are brought back more over time across multiple grade levels, where perhaps in the olden days, it was just in one class, and then you never revisited it again.
I see. Okay.
Mr. Borowski, if I could just reiterate, too, the motion that Mr. Zenobia put on the table was for approval of the Quantitative Reasoning Course. There were three courses that were actually on the agenda for TNL, and so, I know you're asking kind of holistically about what all is there, but I just wanted to clarify that because we, it might, it may or may not help to take it separately.
Right. And, you know, maybe some of this could be done offline versus here, I just figured this is my chance to.
No, this would be the place to have the discussion. I just wanted to clarify that we're not voting on the entire proposal that was presented to TNL, it's just this specific class.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate the clarification. I guess, lastly, I would just say, I know Ms. Kozlowski raised concerns in the last committee meeting about really addressing the fundamentals in math, you know, to help our overall scores, and to address them at a much lower level, elementary level, middle school level. So I guess I'd just like to know, you know, where is that on the priority list? You know, what's, what's coming down the line, if anything, regarding that?
Yes, so when we started this process at the high school level, two and a half years ago, we knew we were starting with the high school, knowing that actually the middle school sequence would work after that. So I would say by January, you will already see the middle school math sequence and proposed adoptions coming your way. So again, we've been really engaging at the high school level over multiple years with the work, and the second, the next phase of that is the middle school level. I guess I'll also add, too, if you recall, and you probably don't, we are, we are currently in a pilot at the elementary level, just at Hadfield, with Bridges as part of a pilot for our elementary math curriculum. And again, if I look globally at a timeline for this, we are also beginning to start the elementary process in terms of piloting resources and talking about what that's going to look like, not for next school year, but depending on how we roll it out, if we do a phased approach or if we do all 13 elementaries, we're in, excuse me, just currently in discussion right now in terms of Phase One of our curricular design process for elementary. So sometimes you think you might work from elementary, middle, and high, right? So that.
That was my next question, yeah.
For those of people. But with the new standards adoption and the talent we had and the driving force, we did start at the high school level.
So it's, it looks like, big picture, we'll be voting next month to approve secondary or high school level, and then possibly middle school will vote on next year for the following year, and then elementary the year after that. Is that what it's looking like?
So this, and Dr. Piasik, you can fill in, too, as needed, please, but the course sequence was already approved by the board over a year ago. So at this point, what is happening is that the board is just in approving any new courses that are proposing to be on the books. So for example, tonight, the Quantitative Reasoning Class is a new course in that Integrated Three Sequence to be on the books, so that's what we're seeking your approval for. When we actually bring back our alternative of course offerings, and those of you that are TNL members, you actually have a secondary math course offerings at your seat right now. Our actual proposal, when we come back in November, does not currently involve a new course, except there will be a new College Board AP Pre-Calculus course that, over time, we will come to ask for approval for. But in this new course offerings sequence, we are kind of going back to that Algebra Two or Honors Algebra Two as an option, and those currently exist in the system. So there truly is no need for the board to take action on that. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Can I follow that? Okay. No, Dr. Piasik?
Does that make sense? And I can try to reiterate, too, and I think Mr. Zenobia will get to it in the report, but because the proposed syllabus for the two Integrated Math Three, Integrated Math Three Courses were not approved by the committee, then administration has gone back to consider leveraging the classes that we already have in place. And that's what they're going to come back with, is to show how quantitative reasoning, if approved by the board, would add into the curriculum, but the remaining courses would stay in place without the addition of the two Integrated Math Three Courses. Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik. I want to clarify kind of where my vote was when we had the Teaching and Learning Committee. Part of my concern really stems from the fact, as Ms. Landish has brought on, right? Like, I do expect that we're going to start to aim for building solid curriculum, elementary on up. My largest concern right now with trying to implement a new course offering or new structures is the fact that we've got 60% of our kids that are not proficient as they move up to the point in understanding that we want them to be perceived to love math, and I agree with that, but they're not there yet. They're not even close to being ready. And so when the foundation isn't stable, adding new courses, adding a new path into this to try to redirect the students through a course sequence with a goal of wanting them to engage in math, by the time they're a junior in high school, at least where we stand right now in this district, we're not there. And so the focus for me is getting to what does work, stabilizing the foundation, making sure they're proficient, and still challenging them through their high school course structure, which we have, to some degree, available to them now. I'm cautious about trying to add new courses, change courses, move the path, and redirect students. While I think the intent is great, I don't think we're ready for that, and I think we've got to focus on the fact that our kids are just not there yet, that they're far behind. And how we start to pull them towards that is really where our focus needs to be. And so that, from my standpoint, that is really where I struggle with all of this. I've, I've spent more time since the TNL meeting looking at it. Conceptually, I like it. I'm concerned that we're bringing students into a program that they're not prepared for and will continue to not succeed if we don't take the step back to the basics.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Como.
I just appreciate a little bit more history on this and what goes into course development. Okay, we had the course sequence that we had passed a year ago. How long did that take for us to develop, and who developed that?
Well, I mean, it's, all of our curricular design processes are collaborative activity with teachers from across the system. Special educators, coaches, sometimes even principals are involved with the breakdown of the standards that are given to us from the state.
So how many people do you think have been involved with trying to realign math with the new standards and make an effort to increase achievement? And that's really what administration is proposing to us, right? I mean, how many people have been working on this?
Well, I would say over the past two years, about 40 or 50 staff members, and I just want to include that the teacher piece. I mean, the teachers have worked very hard in their teacher teams to produce, you know, these recommendations over time. So shout out to them for their time and effort, you know, after school hours to be able to do this for us.
Yeah, I just, you know, and maybe it's easy for me to say this because I've been on the board and been a part of this. There's a lot of effort that's gone into this by the people who are in the trenches, recommending what our next step should be. This was not just a one-hour meeting, couple people saying, hey, let's, let's start up a new course. And, you know, and I don't believe in rubber stamping either, don't get me wrong there. But I think we need to take a step back and understand where this is coming from and how much effort is being put into it, and who's developing this. These are the people who are teaching our students. These are the people who live math day in and day out in educational perspective. And I, you know, I, I think your question's, Mark, they're good questions. And I'm wondering if it, if it might help Superintendent Landish to put forth maybe a large plan, or your plan in, at a high level, so that we can truly understand where we're going with math. You have that, I know you have that. I'm concerned that if we put on the brakes, that all the work that we've done for the last two and a half years is for naught. And I wonder if there's just, you know, maybe a balance in there somewhere. I mean, I, I just, I just feel as though by putting on the brakes completely here, we're, we're sending a message to our experts in our district that you don't know what you're doing. And I, I'm uncomfortable with that.
Mr. Moore.
I would like to say that I appreciate everyone's comments, and I can only speak from my perspective on that day of the meeting that we had in TNL. And again, just my perspective. I want to, again, applaud Mr. Como for his dedication of years on this board. I think that that takes a lot of time and energy, and like I said, a lot of commitment. So I do commend him for that. And I also commend the people who are in the trenches, who take time out of their, you know, busy schedule to collaborate and develop courses. But just how Mr. Como was on the board for a long time, I'm in the trenches as well as a teacher on this board. And I understand what it's like when it comes to curriculum and instruction and teaching and learning. That's what I do for a living, out of all the board members. And so when we had the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting that day, again, I'm only speaking from my experience. Again, I want to first say I appreciate what our professionals have done coming forward with their proposals. And from that experience, there were, you know, three courses that they proposed to us. And I can say that one of them I was on board for, which is the quantitative reasoning course, that did not mean that I was not on board for the other two courses, and that I wanted to send a message that our experts know what they were doing. My, again, I'm only speaking from my experience and my perspective, and where I was at was, you know, hey, these last two courses, you know, can we just get some more clarity? Can we just talk about this more as we proceed into November to kind of see where we're going to be at? So again, I don't want to ever send a message to anybody who are in the profession that I'm in the same one, where I'm in education, that they don't know what they're doing. And so that was not the message that I'm sending to them. My message is, hey, you know, my fellow peers, can we collaborate more? Can we talk more about what these two is looking like and what it should look like and what is, and where are we at collectively in terms of our proficiency, like Ms. Kozowski spoke on, the pathways, and also making sure that every student in our district is able to succeed? Because what I did not want was a one-size-fits-all approach. Not saying that that was the case, but I wanted to make sure that before we take this final vote, where the impact will have, you know, the greatest impact will be on our students and their education journeys, was that making sure that every student who goes through our buildings was able to take courses that fits them, and not making sure that they will be subjected to, you know, only just a limited amount that they may not succeed in. So that was just my perspective. But I want to say again, before I close out, that I do appreciate, you know, our board, my fellow board members, I do appreciate the professionals who take time out of their day to collaborate. Education is not an easy job. You know, someone has to design the courses, someone has to teach the students. I'm in the trenches with you all, and I'm sending a message to the public that I do understand what it's like. And so because of that, I want to say I do appreciate you, and I look forward to collaborating with you on the next course sequences in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to share my thoughts on this, and I greatly respect Mr. Como's perspective, being on the board for a long period of time. The Agile Minds resource was purchased in January of 2021, or was voted on by the board to purchase in January 2021. A majority of the board sitting in this room right now was not on the board in January 2021. And I think that the folks involved in these conversations, the teachers, the administrators, the board members, everybody wants what's best for our students. We all want our students to achieve in mathematics and to be prepared for this series of courses in high school. Also, January of 2021 was a pretty pivotal time in public education, and there were a lot of things going on. So I commend the previous board members for making the decision to purchase a high-quality resource. There are limitations with the resource, there are strengths with the resource. And so I think that it's appropriate, and unfortunately, it's just a part of changes in board membership that's going to require us to take a step back sometimes and think about, was this strategic decision that was made two years ago the right decision for us right now? I would just add to that, I have taught and I have hired engineering students. And so when I look at the sequence and I think about students that I know who have been through those courses, and the observation that we have removed the honors tracks from the high school sequence with the introduction of these courses, I'm not comfortable with that. I think the acceleration of the pre-calculus track in certain ways is not going to prepare those students who are going to be looking for the AP credits for college, who need to get fours and fives on those exams in order to be ready for college physics and mathematics, is it's not quite where I would like to see it. And so I'm looking at it, trying to be objective and respectful of those who have designed the courses. I think we have incredible math teachers in this district, incredible math teachers. And I also think that the compromise that we're at right now, which is maybe not approving the syllabus or the content of the Integrated Three courses, but understanding that that material can be delivered in a way that it is currently, may be a good intermediate step, because I don't think that honors Algebra Two and pre-calculus is where the problems are with our math education. I think the problems are in the K through eight area. So that's why I took the approach that I did, you know, and, again, out of respect for those who were involved in the process, I have great respect for Ms. Landish and her team, and those individuals have spent a lot of time with me to talk through the rationale. I look at the quantitative reasoning course, and I'd love to take that class. I think it's a practical, exciting class for students, whether they love math or don't love math. I think there's an opportunity for everyone to take that class and find just relevant, applicable learnings that they'll use in a trade or in college. I know colleges are now teaching quantitative reasoning as a course. So when I looked at that in isolation, you know, again, the motion that's on the table of that particular class, I think that's a really nice addition to our curriculum without taking away the honors and the kind of engineering prep sequences that we currently have that seem to be serving those students very well. So that's where I'm at and why I have taken the approach that I have with this. And I just wanted to kind of put that back on the table. Anybody else? Okay, so we do have an active motion, and if I had seen no other nods, Sue, would you take the roll call?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Kerry Kozowski.
Nay.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Kelly Piasak.
Aye. Passes eight, one.
Moving on, we had two other discussion items, which were around the secondary math courses, which we have spoke about at some length already, but they were the Integrated Math Three courses of statistics and trigonometry. Teaching and learning was seeking approval for both of these. However, following extensive discussion, a motion was made and therefore no action was taken. Rachel Herman, our Director of Secondary Learning in collaboration with the High School Math Department, teacher reps, will return in November, as we had mentioned, to outline another plan for the 23-24 school year. No, there's any discussion on that item?
I don't see any.
That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report for this evening, and our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 1st at 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zenobia. All right, moving on to the Student Services Committee, given by Mr. McCaffery.
Thank you, Madam President. The Student Services Committee meeting was held September 20th, 2022. We had no action items on the agenda for that meeting. However, we did have four discussion information items. The first was nonviolent crisis intervention, presented by Amanda Mack, Director of Elementary Education. We have 330 certified staff members in the school district, including custodians, secretaries, special education teachers, special education aides, and regular education teachers. There is an NVIC team in each school building. We also have seven trainers in our district that support the certification and recertification of our staff. So any questions on that? All right, moving on, our second discussion information item was, and this is also presented by Amanda, shared the success of the Professional Development Day for our special education aides, which occurred on August 29th. More than half of our special education aides were in attendance for six rotating sessions. The training was well received by the attendees. The special education directors are planning to hold this event annually. Our third discussion information item was update on Student Discipline Work Group. The first meeting was held on September 22nd. Each building will have its principal, a student services representative, and a teacher in the group. Updates will be presented monthly on the group work to our committee. Is there any question on that discussion? All right. Our fourth and final discussion information item was an update on the school safety review. On August 18th, Dr. Cook met with a team of principals, facility directors, police officers from the Waukesha Police Department, a Waukesha County Sheriff's Deputy, and members of the Waukesha Fire Department to review our safety, our school safety protocols. The decision was made to stay with our current safety plans and partner yearly in preparation for our major incidents. Discussions with the group included current, local, state, and national crime trends, drugs, and school threats. The next Student Services Committee meeting is held Tuesday, October 18th at 6:00 p.m. And Madam President, this completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffery. The last committee on the agenda tonight is the Human Resources and Compensation Committee, presented by Mrs. Robertson.
Thank you, Mrs. President. Starting with action items, we do not have any tonight. The discussion items, we spoke about the school calendar update for 2023-24. A draft of the 2023-24 school calendar was provided in your packet and is also available on Board Docs. Each year at this time, we develop a school calendar draft for review. The committee is asked to review this draft and offer its feedback. As in years past, we have already obtained teacher feedback at the Superintendent's Advisory Committee for Professional Staff. The HR and Compensation Committee and Board of Education will review for possible approval at November's meeting. Then we spoke of the review of the staff dress code policy. At the September HR meeting, the committee requested a review of the staff dress code policy. The policy and the corresponding handbook language is attached in Board Docs.
Mr. Moore.
Yes, going back to the calendar, because I have one just, you know, just make a comment there. Sorry, going back to the calendar, I wanted to just make a comment there, because I thought this was, you know, most of it was wonderful, you know, the team that designed it. And I will say, because I am grateful for our professionals, and I do commend them, I was going to, you know, I looked at the calendar and I said, hey, wouldn't it be, is it possible that we can give them an extra day that Friday for winter, before winter break, or a half day to thank them and families and students? So that's one thing that I was looking at, maybe if we did give them, you know, follow the Thanksgiving week, in the same way it will be the week before Christmas break, maybe that Friday or even Thursday. And if we can't do it that day, Thursday, then maybe a half day on Friday, just to give them an early release before Christmas break. So that's one of the things I was just looking at, and just wanted to make my comment on that, to show our gratitude and appreciation for our professionals.
Any comments or response to that? Mrs. Thiede, not to put you on the spot, but maybe you could clarify some of the requirements as far as like the minutes and hours and what goes into calendar design?
Correct. So we do, we have minutes that we need to meet according to the state, and then number of days worked for the teacher contract, so all that's taken into account when designing the calendar.
And then, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? But thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, go ahead, Karen.
That is all, Ms. President. Thank you for allowing me to speak on the report.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our committee updates for tonight. We're now to the part of our agenda where we can field any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items. Are there any recommendations? Mr. Montiel.
Thank you, Dr. Piasak. I'd like to look into the district's long-term and short-term intent of owning the property off the bypass on the west side of Waukesha. I don't remember the address, it's a side road. If we could look into one that was acquired, I guess get a report of when it was required, what I guess the thought process was, what the current process is, if we know what a fair market value for that would be, and then we can discuss possibilities of what to do, if anything, with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, of course, anyone can bring suggestions forward at any time. So we do have a need for an executive session tonight, and be looking for someone to motion us into executive session. Right, we do not need B or C, correct? So item D. Mr. Montiel.
Item D.
Yes, please.
Move to adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85 sub 1 sub C to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employer over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, superintendent evaluation and compensation for superintendent and executive administrators, administrators, excuse me.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zenobia. All right, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Kerry Kozowski.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Kelly Piasak.
Aye. Okay, we are reconvening to open session. Mrs. Kozowski, can you do a quick roll call?
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Pat McCaffery.
Aye.
Here, here, please.
Here, here.
Joe Como.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Kelly Piasak.
Here.
Kerry Kozowski, here. Corey Montiel.
Here.
Mark Barowski.
Here.
Markell Moore.
Here.
Okay, following discussion around executive compensation, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the compensation package as presented in closed session.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zenobia. Any further discussion? All right, Mrs. Kozowski, would you please take the roll call vote?
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Kerry Kozowski, aye.
Kelly Piasak. Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Joe Como.
Aye.
Pat McCaffery.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes nine, zero, and that adjourns the meeting for tonight. Thank you.
Good work, everybody.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.